Committee of the Call for Order, the March 26th meeting of the S and D. By intermission of your eyes, please. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a roll call?
We have Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen.
Here.
Vice Chair Romo.
Here.
Chairman Span.
Here.
Commissioner McNair.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Okay, do I have a motion in terms of minutes in the last meeting? We have said.
Said.
Okay, communication.
Good evening Chairman Span, on the dais were placed three emails that were stapled together as one related to public hearing item G1, so those are available for your consideration prior to the item being heard.
Thank you. Future number meetings? Does anybody in the audience wish to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we're going to move into the public hearings, G1, amendment to the downtown specific plan to establish a density transfer program within the downtown specific plan. Do any of the commissioners have anything to disclose? I have heard this presentation at numerous neighborhood meetings as well as the historic preservation commission, so I just may put it where they are.
Good evening Chairman Span, members of the commission and staff and meeting members that are here this evening. My name is Peggy Chaitman, I'm a contract planner. For those of you who don't know me, I've been around for a long, long time and I've worked various times with the city dating way back from when my, well, I wouldn't even tell you how long I've been here. But anyway, through come and go, and I've been working with the city for the last couple of years on several projects, one of them being the downtown specific plan amendment. We have before you this evening an amendment to the downtown specific plan to establish a density transfer program within the downtown, and this would enable the city to transfer residential densities from other properties that are either undeveloped or underutilized, which we call sending areas, to developing properties which would be received. The background downtown specific plan is a comprehensive plan developed with the city back in the 1980s, it's been amended numerous times, and most recently in 2013 where there's expansions and changes to land these densities. But overall, the purpose of the downtown specific plan has been to encourage vital community, very active, and it's now at 475 unit, 475 acres. Twenty twelve, when the last general plan was adopted, it was called inner dwelling units within the downtown, since then we've had another 185 units added, about 120 that are approved and not yet constructed. However, the overall downtown density in the general plan estimated achieve a residential unit, selling units of 5,275, we're still short by 3,764. But this amendment would still maintain the downtown, the max of 5,275, and the proposed amendment would be to create a density transfer program. Overall, the goals for the downtown specific plan, just to summarize, was to ensure economic viability, created as a downtown local, regional destination, foster vibrant atmosphere, the office mix uses, offices, restaurants, commercial, and high density residential. Higher density residential would support downtown and expand more pedestrian activity, which would create more vitality. The proposed amendment to the downtown specific plan would, we still would do exactly that, expand pedestrian activity, increase the growth, secure multi-family development, would maintain the 5,275 dwelling units that the general plan has addressed, and we have been voted for before the House. This is the overall downtown specific plan of all the different districts, the orange area, of course, south is at a dwelling unit, 25 dwelling units per acre. This is down to 45, this is dwelling units of 75 per acre, and up here, blue area is 100 units per acre. That would still retain the same, other than they would be able to transfer density to a developing area to achieve a higher density and enable more affordable housing. We've looked at this, the downtown specific plan, transfer density would expand pedestrian activity, and one of the other areas we're looking at, transfer density, is the transfer development rights, it's been around for a long time, we trans typically, communities and cities down this numerous times, transfer density, we want to preserve areas like environmental area, preserve and transfer over to another area where it's a little more dense, where it doesn't have those environmental considerations. So there's options for encouraging development, transfer, development rights, it's been around for a long time, it allows property owners to sell their property, the density to a developing property. The difficulty has been a lot of those, it just results in a lot of lengthy negotiations, frequently this doesn't ever happen. What we've looked at more recently is something a little bit more unique, a density transfer program for the whole of the city, transfer density from the undeveloped, underutilized properties, which we call sending areas, to the developing properties, receiving areas. It would no costly appraisal, the project would be reviewed through the development review process, so a property owner who is receiving increased density would have to submit for a development review project, a planned development, as well as a development review. Those would then be approved and analyzed by the city, and would be approved by the city council. We have brought this forward to a number of different communities, downtown business association, S and D Chamber of Commerce, Old Escalante Neighborhood, and most recently the historic preservation commission. Overall, as they generally, they're receptive to the, this new approach, concerns related to individual development, the development interest through the development process, the planned development process, would have to still come back to the planning commission and onto council for approval. It'll be reviewed, as would any planned development, looking at zoning, aesthetics, design, and they give, they have the opportunity to review those projects as they go back to the planning commission and the council. This is a way we're going to track the densities, as they transfer, this will be ascending, we'd identify what we're sending parcels, what does the parcel number is, ownership, how much is being transferred, when it gets approved by the council. And this is show the receiving parcels, the properties receives it, also we have to show when it was approved by the city council and the developer who was approved, and it automatically starts deducting from what's available through the general plan, that overall balance is left on the downtown. Now, kind of a little fast, we have to ask you more questions, staff, we recommend that the planning commission approve this proposed amendment to the downtown specific plan, there was an addendum that you have in your staff report, it was prepared by an outside consultant, areas associates, it also did the general plan, EIR, and the downtown specific plan, ER, and that was provided to you, that you certified as part of this whole process. You have any answer to the question, and we have with us as well, the answer to the question, so we have Adam Hardeston and our attorney, Adam Phillips. Thank you.
Okay, any commissioners have questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you for the presentation. One great question I have is with this density transfer, and I'm not against that, quite frankly not at this point, but I do have a couple of concerns. One of the concerns is in regard to transferring the density. So if we're transferring density over to a piece of property, let's say it's 70 units per acre, or 75 units per acre, what happens to the other zoning that goes along with that? There's setbacks, parking requirements, height requirements, all of those things, so even though we may increase the number of units on this particular piece of property, are we talking about allowing for increase in height, decrease in parking, decrease setbacks, those sort of things, does that automatically come along with the density transfer?
That could come with another request of the developer, and that then again be reviewed at the staff level, at a design review committee level, then with planning commission on the city council. There may be requests for waivers, and typically with the density, whether it's a local housing project, they will request some additional waivers to be considered. That then again, must be approved separately from the density transfer.
So, is the density transfer contingent upon density bonus through the density bonus ordinance?
No.
Or not?
No, it's not contingent at all. I should add that too, that we, what we anticipate is the first undeveloped property we'd use as kind of the catalyst would be the city parking lot of front Calmia, and that would be the catalyst, and we'll see how that's work. It also, they'll state that every year this whole project, we come back at the end of the year, the city council, for them to review how it's working, or they want to continue with it, descend it, and forward, make any changes to it.
Okay, thank you. And I was reading a couple of the items here that came from a couple of votes, and there seems to be a little bit of a disagreement between what was in the staff report, there was a large support for the density bonus. Could you kind of elaborate on, on at least your perception of the results in this meeting?
Well, some of the communities, the meeting was a little different, there's support in downtown, this association was much more receptive, Old Escalante Neighborhood, historic preservation commission was concerned about projects coming forward and requesting concessions, waivers, higher densities, and higher, built, the whole design issue. And again, that would be reviewed on separate issue, that kind of, we'll be going back, reviewed by the city, planning department if we currently do, with environmental issues, making sure there's not, with environmental concerns, height aesthetics, the developers they do now would come through and provide us with studies that show how it's going to look visually, provide, you know, an additional analysis for water, traffic, and parking, and all that, people would look at, we would, with environmental issues currently, and those are gone, with recommendations of planning commission on council.
Sure, so the project has to stand on its own merits.
Exactly, and it may not make it on its own merits.
And it may not.
Exactly. But nonetheless, the density would not be approved if it's going to planning commission and the city council? The density bonus would go on its own, it would have to go with approved planning development.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sorry, I had a question. It was along the lines of what Commissioner Wyler was asking, which I thought did more broadly include some other things, but, you know, I was seeing, I think it was back in March, for San Diego City Council, Dallas approving projects with no parking requirements, provided they were within a half mile proximity of public transportation, as a confirmed fact. I'm kidding, but I mean, I can tell you, I don't think I walk a half a mile in the rain or something, it's with no transportation, or no parking, rather, and I just don't know how that would work, and it's telling you, if you're saying on each, on each project that might come toward the planning commission, under these offices, a developer could ask for, or request for, propose no parking, is that true?
They could ask for waivers, I don't see Escalito being supportive of that. It's been pretty, one of the projects that is moving forward, dividing these with detailed parking analysis and parking management that we're still reviewing, our truck engineer and someone doing the reviewing those parking spaces, projects have, moving forward, and you will be able to make the comments when it does come to you later this year.
I have one question, I just, along the lines of what I was supposed to the other day, as far as the mandate from Sacramento that we allow a bonus automatically on the basis of the affordable housing that's going in here, so they're already going to get a bonus on density. Let's just take, for example, the one acre lot in Ivy, 75 units, because when they take advantage, if they were, if you were looking to do 75 units on there and do the necessary affordable housing, what would the bonus just on that be, do you know?
The one I was to with is Firebug.
No, this, overall, Ivy.
Chair Span, if I may, I think we need to focus our analysis at this point on the density transfer program. The specifics of any of these, any of these actual projects will come at the time when we bring those projects to the commission, but for the time being, what we're looking at is the program as a whole, how that would operate, and not the density that one project might or might not be requested.
Well, I understand what you're saying, however, there is a pattern that's going to occur on every single project, and I'm just trying to get a feel for what would be on a 75, in this zone for 75 units, what would the bonus from Sacramento automatically be not talking about, I just would like to know.
So, on a typical project where you have, say, 75 unit per acre site, and you've got an acre, if you provide 35% of your units as affordable to very low income individuals, I believe making 50% or less of the area median income, you are entitled to an 11%, I'm sorry, if you provide 11% of the units, you're entitled to 35% bonus, so if you provide as eight units, as affordable units, you would be then getting 35% of 75, another 30 or another 30.
This particular instance is 33.
My math wasn't that off. Okay, thank you. I just wanted, I'm just, do we have any other questions to say?
I do. I'm a little bit confused about all of this. So, for instance, right now, we know that Palomites is underdeveloped, that's going to generate a density.
Surplus.
Surplus, which is awesome, so we'll be able to utilize those someplace else within this downtown specific plan. When those are all consumed, and the parking lots are consumed, where's the balance of the surplus going to come from?
Where is this more surplus going to come from?
Because we haven't hit 5,200, or whatever it's, 5,200, some odd.
Underdeveloped, underutilized properties, maybe properties that.
Who determines which ones are underdeveloped or underutilized?
I think it'd be analysis done by staff, regulations.
So, if I have a piece of property that I don't want to develop, staff could come and say, no, we're utilizing your bonus now, and my heirs would lose that?
And we can make the recommendation, council will make that decision.
But they could conceivably take away my property rights at that point, if the council voted yes, and we voted yes, and gave them that bonus, then would those be lost forever?
No.
Where would they go?
Those would be, let's say, not update councils, I don't, I think we're looking for willing property owners, we're not looking for bribing them, so.
Does that say that here, in this, that they have to be willing?
It says that council will consider property.
But does that say that the owner has to be willing in this?
No, but what it does say, if you, the property owner wants to come back and ask for it back, you get that, provided it's still surplus in the pool.
Right, but you've given away, because right now, if I do the density bonus, does that go against my 5,200 units?
No, it doesn't, it's in the pool, yes, it's pulled down to the pool.
Right.
No, I'm sorry, no, it doesn't pull down.
So then, so then.
It'd just be what's requested for.
Right, so my question is, on the 52 units, if I take density bonus on all of them?
That doesn't count against the pool.
It doesn't count against, do I get, so then, do we have 8,000 units downtown, or we just still have the 5,200?
You still have the 5,275, because you can't exceed that within the general.
Right, so then, those people, it could be gone forever and ever, technically, if the 5,200, because people are taking the bonuses and the transfer, they could all be consumed, and I could have a one acre parcel that my family's been sitting on for 100 years, and I could be out of luck, or my kids could be out of luck, and I don't have any property downtown or anything, I'm just thinking, you know, don't think that I'm not that lucky.
Well, I think we can move a lot slower than that, too, it's going to come back every year, and the council will make that determination.
But if the council is, if the council's pro-development and everything, they could keep saying, yes, 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 and they could be consumed, and I could be left with nothing?
If a lot is.
It sure is, but it does happen, okay, I'm just curious, just curious about that. So, I would, so some people could potentially be losing property rights at this point, if all those ifs happened in concurrence, is that fair to say?
No, because even that would kind of stop, we still have to allow, you don't even develop that, so.
Right, no, I understand, so, so those units are, they're taken by the council, and I didn't, I wasn't a willing participant, because I don't have to be a willing participant, the city just takes it, right? Because it doesn't say I have to be a willing participant to give up my density, but you say my lot is, you know, let's say I'm over there next to Bike Bling, and I'm not utilizing that space over there, and I don't know, I didn't look at the map closely enough, I'm just doing a lot of ifs again, if I'm by Bike Bling, and I have that parking lot there that's not fully utilized, and I've owned that piece of property, and you guys go ahead and say, well, that parking lot's associated with that commercial, and now it's going away, and all 5,200 units are used up, because the developers took the 30% bonus off the top, so that only really leaves a smaller, it leaves 30% less units, because developers could consume 35% of those units in a sense.
Well, you missed, one section, it does require that as a property owner, you have to sign the deed restriction, if you don't sign the deed restriction, those units are not going to be taken off of your property.
So, so I, so it's, I can't willingly, they can't unwillingly take it from you.
You need to sign the deed restriction, restrict, and to send those units off to the.
Okay, so the benefit to me of signing that deed restriction is the developer's going to pay me for it, or why would I do that?
You would not.
As a property owner, why would I give up those rights?
You don't really release your density, you don't sign the deed restriction unless there's a reason you'd value it, why you'd sell it to the developer.
Okay, and that would be the reason why?
That'd be your reason why.
Okay, okay, just curious.
Quick question, are those units available for taking by unit or manning at all?
No, it's not part of the school.
No, yeah, that would not be my, I mean, I think it's, what the language here says is that two willing property participants are going to enter into a transaction, or they're going to agree to transfer one density to another, that's completely independent of the city. The city is required to approve that, the developer, you're going to plan to develop a property, but what they transact, how they transfer, that's a third party, the city doesn't get involved, and they don't have a way to force that.
And I think that that was the clarification, I needed that, both parties have to be willing, the sender and the receiver, and then the sender is the one that essentially has a deed restriction on their property that says, I can only develop X units, or I gave away X number of units to be a part of this density transfer.
Right, because they see the benefit from encouraging downtown developers, the property owner might see benefit for having a trail across the back of their property.
Thank you.
Does that, just because I'm not completely, is that a deed restriction that runs with the property, like restricted coverage, or something, it's enabled forever, right?
Right, unless they're going to go back and request, they want to have those units back, that they request out of the back of the council, then that deed restriction will be modified.
Okay, and then, if I'm understanding correctly, is it almost like a 1031 exchange, sort of, for, for density? I mean, because the two parties have to agree to it, it can't be compulsive on anybody.
Right, the one party has to agree to sending, now whether, receiving parts, you may not, maybe some of the receiving parts may get, and what the council decides to approve, you know, picking two to receive, or the same, unless you saw or getting paid, you know, through agreement, separate agreement, that you're negotiating that.
There's, you're moving parts, too.
Yeah, like. So, when the, and I'm just stuck in this, because I, don't ask me why, I just get something in my head, I just keep asking questions. So, when the whole 5,200 units are consumed, they're gone, period. So, technically, if everybody takes advantage of that bonus, how many units are truly available to the pieces of property now, that's 35% off the 5,200?
So, if I, I think I can clarify a little bit, there may be some confusion here regarding the density transfer program versus our density bonus ordinance. Density bonus is where you can, you know, tack on an extra 35% on top, or whatever that percentage is going to be, depending.
So, here's my question.
That does not count.
Does that mean I go to 8,000 units downtown?
Hypothetically.
I could have 8,000 instead of, okay.
If you're providing affordable housing units, those are allowed above and beyond what the general plan.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify, thank you.
Committee of the public hearing, we have a couple of speaker slips, Sharon Sanders.
Thanks for the relax. I'm not familiar with a lot of this language, I've just started the meeting, one thing I'd like to ask you is what you mean by underutilized? What does that mean?
To answer that, if you, let's say, your property has one residence on there that could turn the downtown specific plan, and it was zoned for 75, so it's underutilized, you basically have 74, which you built on that property.
Okay, but about a parking lot, what is the meaning for a parking?
It's underutilized, it's zoned for residential use, regular commercial use, it's open to something else other than a parking lot, it's underutilized.
Yeah, it's, I guess, far, anyway, I was at the meeting. Yeah, it's probably too far. Anyway, I was at the meeting where we reached out to get the opinion, our oldest community on the density transfer plan. What was stated in the report that I read quickly this afternoon is not at all in agreement with my experience. The overall flavor of the community was not for, we had lots of concerns, especially with Aspire. So it's just, and this has happened also in my experience coming to meetings and then hearing council, getting reports with the downtown man. Same thing. I go to a meeting, I come to city council, and the report that's given is very different than what happened at the meeting. So I'm a novice here. That really upsets me. It's like, why do you go? I go to the meeting. And every time I saw somebody, come on, let's go to the meeting. They go, why bother? And they just move, they want to anyway. So I don't understand all the language, all the genealogy and all the steps that go on. My experience has not been positive so far without things that happen. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Hey, Carol Ray?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Carol Ray. As the chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission, I disapprove of the way we are represented in the staff report for this agenda item as well. A list of community groups included in item six, public input, indicates that the proposed program was presented to the Historic Preservation Commission on March twenty-first, just last Thursday. But no further detail of our response is mentioned in that report. In fact, we were not presented with the information on the DTP in order to collect our input. But for informational purposes only, as stated in the HPC staff report. Even though we are tasked with protecting the city's historic resources, we were specifically not enlisted to weigh in on this important amendment to the downtown specific plan. A document which was carefully written to maintain the historic integrity of our notable and beloved downtown. There is sound reason that the downtown specific plan limits buildings within the downtown core to four stories and seventy-five dwelling units per acre or less in order to maintain appropriate scale for buildings that have stood downtown for a hundred and fifty years. This document should not be amended without extremely careful consideration and input from the community, including the historic experts on the HPC. I believe at least a majority of the seven-member commission was extremely concerned by the potential problems that the DTP would unleash on downtown. For example, it immediately opens the door for the Aspire project to apply for density credits, allowing a six-story development that will loom over the one and two-story buildings downtown and at twice its height cast a shadow over our handsome city hall. Incompatibly tall, ultra-modern buildings like Aspire will do irreparable damage to the historic fabric of our charming downtown forever. I was also in attendance at the Old Escondido Neighborhood Group meeting on February twentieth, when the DTP was described very briefly following presentations about pending other developments downtown. The comment expressed in the staff report that the Old Escondido Neighborhood Group supported the DTP concept is untrue as most of the ninety or more neighbors in attendance did not like the size and scale of Aspire and Ivy projects. As a result, I'm asking, at the very least, that the information related to the HPC and OEMG be corrected in the staff report. And line B, oral testimony from city staff, interested parties, and the public be stricken from the amendment. But would actually prefer that you postpone your vote on this amendment until more research is performed regarding both the negative and the positive effects. Or better yet, just vote against the proposed amendment tonight to prevent the destruction of our downtown's unique character. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Walker?
Good evening. I'm Lisa Walker. I'm the current president of Old Escondido Historic District. And I believe you did receive my email. Okay, so I don't think I need to read that for you. But I just wanted to reiterate that the statement, the Old Escondido Neighborhood Group supported the DTP concept. It's just the word "supported" that I thought was misrepresenting how that being important. We didn't vote one way or another. And we were actually, I actually asked before hand if we could take a vote, show of hands who supported or didn't. And they wished it wasn't a meeting for that, which I understood. This is just supposed to be a meeting where we're sharing information, the public can hear about these projects, which we did have some that were kind of excited. But the majority was a lot of concern, speaking with other neighbors. They almost felt resigned to it. We don't have a choice. They're not going to listen. We've been to other meetings. They're just, it doesn't help. So it's a little saddened by that. I did want to share from our minutes that we posted on our website, oldescondido.org in our news section. This is what we had for the transfer and density note. Because the Palomar's project is fewer units than allowed, desired, under the DSP, the city will implement a density transfer plan, allowing the city to build units in other areas of downtown. The other that I'd like to share with you is just the now what, it was at the end of our meeting, our notes. Says the points from the meeting go into staff report, which is submitted to the planning commissioners. These are the points Bill Martin wrote down before the staff report. They were on the board for all of us to see. It was great. Everyone was giving feedback and we had this meeting. But these points are too many apartments need for sale units, incompatible architecture, not enough parking flow into neighborhood. Aspire versus Harvest Escondido, need a three-D model of Aspire, need residents to support downtown businesses, and too much at once. Those were major points of our meeting altogether, of what was coming from us that they heard and wrote. I'll just reiterate, what was in my email is just that I believe that we neither supported nor were against the density transfer plan since we were not voting even in an informal matter. And most voices at the meeting tended to be concerned about the increased density. We spent most of our time speaking about the particular projects, Aspire, Ivy, and Palomar. And most of what people were concerned about was just too much. So that's why I have to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for future comments and discussion.
The density bonus ordinance applies regardless of the density transfer program. Am I correct? Regardless of where we vote tonight on the density transfer program, it can go from fifty-two seventy-five to wherever plus three percent. I just wanted to share, I wanted to be clear about that.
I have a few concerns. I mean, I clearly understand that each one of the projects in the future are going to have to come forward and be reviewed based on their own merits. Probably my biggest concern right now is whether or not enough public outreach was done. I know that when the downtown specific plan was prepared, there was a lot of effort that went into that and a lot of thought that went into that. And a lot of public input was received to create the various density limits and height limits and the various requirements that come along with each development. So it's not that I'm against a density transfer per se, but my concern is truly if we are going to not have enough public input on something that has the potential to drastically change the density in one area versus another. I'm expressing that concern because I'm not sure what the future holds. There's a part of me that feels we'll never have a density level, never is long enough. It's going to be an extremely long time before we hit the five thousand units out there. Or even the eight thousand if every piece of property builds to the max, plus they do another thirty-five percent. But I am concerned that we haven't gotten enough input from the public. And it's unfortunate, quite frankly, that we have four people in the audience that are speaking on this. We listen to the public. We truly do. We've had half this chamber spilt. And we've, we've changed the recommendation from, that was coming from staff based on public input. Or we've postponed our vote because of the input that was received. And so for the public, you have to get your friends, your family to come in and express your feelings, especially if you are not feeling that your message is getting across to various staff members. So I wish you would tell your, your organization members to please comment, please write in, give your opinions so that we have a very broad perspective on where the community is. Because if we don't see that from the community, then we think the community is okay with this. I suspect that maybe, maybe not. I'm concerned only because I know that a lot of work went into this specific plan. But again, I'm not entirely against a density transfer. But those are the comments.
But in what, my understanding is without the density transfer, they would never hit the fifty-two seventy-five because of the underutilized properties that couldn't be utilized. That it couldn't be allowed to fifty-two seventy-five without the density transfer. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, we've identified that. That's why we're coming forward with the density change.
I've been at several of these meetings and I would have to agree that I don't feel that the community's input was as favorable as the staff report would indicate. Personally, I, I see a density transfer being an extremely valuable tool in development and in planning in certain areas. I don't however see it as being useful in an established downtown with a store of nature that as far as I'm concerned is already relatively crowded at that right time. I can't, I can't even imagine with the build out and what is allowed right now, like what it could be built out and utilizing the bonus that they would get, plus the bonus they give themselves in revenue. So to say that they can build seventy-five units on an acre actually means they could build over a hundred units on an acre without, without going through any hoops other than to say that we're going to put in some affordable housing. I think that we're building too much rental. I know that these are on a saleable footprint, but there's still going to be apartments. I, I would agree with Commissioner Walker saying that it's, I'm not necessarily against the density transfer. But in this case, I would oppose this. Right now, I disagree with you here. I don't think it makes sense. I honestly think we need more people downtown. I think we need that. I have a challenge with some different things going on downtown. I think we need more people downtown all the time. Because we go to different cities that are thriving in busking downtown areas. Those establishments and those businesses that are there, they need that traffic, the population moving back and forth. As we move forward and we reduce our usage of automobiles, which we will do because it's just going to happen at some point in the future. We're going to need those types of densities and we're going to have to pack them. Is that going to happen in the next ten years? Probably not. But we as a planning commissioner are establishing what's going to happen in this community for the next hundred years and beyond. And the things that are atrocious to people now may not be as atrocious in fifty-five years because all of a sudden it's another historic building that's out there. And it's a difficult thing for me to make that determination. What saddens me greatly is that there's only four of you here, well, only technically three because only three spoke. If there is truly a community outcry to this proposal, there should be a hundred people here. When we were at the Lexus dealer, we had a, how many, I couldn't tell you how many people were in this room. But there's a whole lot more for a sound than, than there are right now for this. And so for me, I'm in favor of density. I'm in favor of getting a lot of people downtown, in favor of having that positive flow. One guy's art and the other guy's junk. I understand that and I'm not going to determine that. And as the Aspire and the Ivy projects come along down the road, all the other projects, we will have that opportunity, as well as you, to come with your members and your groups to say why you think that project's not appropriate. I am not a yes guy, but at this point in time, I just have a different opinion of what I think should be happening here. And I truly wish in the next meeting that this comes before you have a hundred people or two hundred people in that meeting to have these conversations. But at this point, that's, that's where I'm at, but it's...
I'm going to have to share in Commissioner Roebel's comments. I'm all for the downtown area growing. As you drive downtown, it's not, it's not a pleasant place. It's not a, it's not a great place. I understand there's a lot of history and I understand there's a lot of, not only history, but historic buildings, historic plans. And as Commissioner Roebel stated, at some point, whatever gets built there is going to actually be history again going forward. And the only way that downtown is going to survive is to actually grow to what it is now. And that's, that's my opinion. I do, I support the quality density. I also agree with Commissioner Wilder and Roebel that there should be, there should be more of a presence for people to explain why they don't want here or because right now, again, there's only three. And it doesn't, that doesn't seem to me anyway that there's a huge concern. I know you voiced your concern and as you all did. But it, the only way that the city is going to survive or the downtown is going to survive... to survive, or the downtown is going to survive, is to have it grow. And again, each project is going to come up in front of the commission, in front of the staff, in front of the commission, and then eventually in front of the city council, and things can be judged and discussed at that time, but I have no problem supporting the actual density increase.
I've been in this view about fifteen years, and driving down Grand Avenue, I still see a lot of big vacant buildings, and I think in order to legalize it with the new projects coming along, it's going to take more people downtown, even though we added several, several power developments and apartments, et cetera, that have brought people in, and still hasn't brought enough to build, so, so I can support this thing, and more people close to downtown, right, right, the people who want to drive to the economy closer.
I think I've got to clarify my position a little bit further. My concern was just not the input from the public, because we received a lot from the public during the preparation of the downtown specific plan. But I do agree with my fellow commissioners, without the people in the downtown area, it's not going to flourish, it just won't. So, I agree with some of my fellow commissioners, that we need to do what we can to promote the development downtown, and if allowing for some of the areas to be higher density at while reducing that density, some place else, I'm not against that. My concern, as has been reiterated, is input from the public. And I think that was the only clarification I really needed.
Somebody want to make a motion? Do you want to tell it?
I'm struggling with the decision, because I agree that in order for the downtown to be bustling and busy, we need, we need more, excuse me, we need more residents living there. But I'm also concerned that portable housing, which is necessary, but it shouldn't be at the expense of, I'm trying to use a very appropriate word, I'm trying to find the word that doesn't sound as strong, because it's not my feeling as strong, but I'll go ahead and use this for a lack of a better word, destroying our downtown, our historic, you know, and I struggle, I really, really am struggling with that. And the input of the community, thank you for coming, and I wish there would have been so much more, because when I read the report, I was all for it, great, we're going to have a five-minute meeting, let's all vote in favor of it. But now that I read this, I begin to question, oh, okay, so I'm reading my notes, everybody else asked all the questions that I had, and, but I still think that it'd probably be a good idea to ensure that, or try at least our best, see if we could get additional community input in regard to this. I don't know if that's possible, it certainly seems like we're just going to let it go tonight, but density is going to happen, it certainly seems like, because of the bonus ordinance. So, with that, it's likely to hit the fifty-two seventy-five. By doing this, then the question is, is it going to be more? I've been through areas of downtown, and there is already no parking. Street parking is all taken, and if we, if we are not careful with how, what we support, and unfortunately, those areas may be close to grand, but they're not grand, and we have plenty of empty spaces, and, but like I said, I'm for it, density, we need it, but is this the best way to do it? Maybe is my question. Thank you for listening to me.
Can I make one more comment?
Make one. What other comment?
I agree that there aren't enough of us here tonight, and I'll tell you that we only had a few days' notice that this would be covered on this meeting. Plus, those people that the city staff presented this information to believed that their input at that meeting would be properly reported, and they would be represented, and there would be no need to be here tonight. Now, you know, this makes me wonder if the city has future informational meetings, maybe we forego that and come directly to you or the city council. I just expressed that to staff, to keep that in mind, that we need to be properly represented. Had we had a little more time, we might have had more people here, but this was just last minute, can you be here? And some people, there were several other people who could not on such short notice.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to, I would like to move that we postpone tonight's vote for, for two weeks, only two weeks. I would like to hear more from the public and get their input, but my motion is that we continue this for no more than two weeks.
Can I clarify, so is that to a date certain, then? And maybe, is there a commission meeting on that date?
I believe that the next meeting, it would be April ninth.
I should have clarified that, to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
That is in two weeks, isn't it?
I don't know.
Correct, it is.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that we postpone the decision on this until we hear.
Did I forget what the second was? Or did I think?
Okay, can we vote on this? So, just to clarify, a yes vote on this is to postpone the decision for two weeks. Okay, it is unanimous, we will postpone PHG seventeen oh oh two four amendment to the downtown specific plan to establish a density transfer program in the downtown specific plan area for our next scheduled meeting, which is April ninth, is that correct?
Yes.
We have no current business. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak about anything? Seeing none, any comments? I'll make a comment, I think that was the right motion, the right move to take, but I expect that our next meeting will be considerably more thorough.
Thank you, Chairman, and please take, um, take this, it's a little bit, not much, you have, you still have an opportunity to speak, but get the input from your, please, get the input from your, from your committee members, and please, does that necessarily mean that anything will be changed enough? It is not guaranteed, but at least it gives us the opportunity to hear a little bit more.
Any other comments? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.[1595.83]